Start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, bless all our actions and carry them on by thy gracious assistance so that every prayer and good work of ours may begin from thee and by thee be happily ended through Christ our Lord. Amen. Before we sit down, can we have about thirty second moment of silence for Jim Forbes who passed away? I think it was Saturday. He had thirty years of service on the council. Okay, thank you.
Rest in peace, Jim.
Yep. Dependents roll call.
All right, Rob Neider.
Here.
Joe Von Sass.
Here.
Lou Bonk.
Here.
Tim Wagner.
Here.
Keith Bluder.
Here.
Tom Snyder.
Here.
Steve Fesco.
Here.
Thanks for all coming out, everybody, and appreciate everybody out there. We're gonna start doing this. We've had the audit done, and she's gonna make a presentation. I'm sorry, first name you're...
Jennifer.
That's right, Jennifer's gonna make a presentation from Smith, Elliott, and Kearns.
Very good. Well, thank you. As you said, I'm here to present on the 2023 year-end audit that we just completed. So you have a couple of items there in front of you that are quote-unquote "audit deliverables," which we'll go through briefly here today. Please stop me along the way. If you need any clarification on any items, I'd be happy to address those. I do have one other little small handout for us to look at tonight, too, so I'll pass this around here as I get started, if you wanna take one. And again, we'll get to that one later, too. But before we dig in, I do wanna give a big thank you and compliment to Jessica. She is great in assisting us throughout the audit, gathering everything that we need, answering our questions. So thank you. I've gotten to work with her for a couple of years now, and she always does a great job, so.
Thank you.
She's a good one to have.
She is a mess.
Her middle name is Luann.
Okay, so a couple of items there in front of you. The bound copy is the audited DCED report. That has been electronically filed with the state, the DCED. We also paper mail a copy on your behalf to the county clerk of courts. So those two filings have been done already. The last page of the bound copy isn't really part of the DCED report. That's why there's a blue sheet in between the two. That is referred to of the notice of audit. So this essentially takes all those pages of the DCED report and condenses it into one more simpler page to look at. And this is what Jess will publish in the local newspaper for the public to view. And then lastly, there are two letters. One is a required communications letter, one is a management letter. Again, we'll look at both of those here at the conclusion of my presentation. But I did wanna start with the DCED report. So again, that's the one that's in your bound copy. The first three or so pages there of that report, you will find our independent auditor's report. And so we had expressed what's referred to as an unmodified opinion. This is a clean opinion. Means it's the best one that you can receive. So that's normally what cooks like to hear. Essentially, we're stating that the financial report, the DCED report, is fairly presented in all material respects. I think it's just important to tell you what it is not. So our financial audit was not an audit on internal controls or fraud investigation. So our opinion is not on those or the results of those. Both of those types of audit would be outside of the scope that we did for the financial audit. So then, after our audit opinion there, then we get into the DCED report. Again, it's kinda hard to follow along with each other because there are so many pages. So let's just direct our attention to the notice of audit, which is that last sheet there in your bound version. So just very simply here, the notice of audit, what this does is the borough reports on the governmental basis of accounting, if you will, as well as the cash basis. So they report different funds. So you have three governmental funds that you'll see there. You have your general fund, your special revenue fund, which is where your liquid fuels, state aid dollars, get reported, your capital projects, which is where your rec fund sits, as well as any reserve monies that you have. For example, you have the sewer upgrade reserve fund that sits in your capital projects fund. The next kind of category of funds, then, are your proprietary funds. This would be the billings, the charges for service that you build to the residents for sewer and your solid waste. And then your final fund is the fiduciary fund. This is where the two pension plans that the borough sponsors is sitting. Again, kind of outside of the scope of your general day-to-day books, but because the borough is the sponsor of those plans, they're required to be reported on your statement here. Okay? So how this statement works is we start with your fund balance. This is your beginning fund balance. We report all revenues collected during the year into those various categories. Then you get into your total expenses for the year into the various categories to get you to your excess or deficit of revenues over expenses. This would be, can liken it to a net income, loss type of thing. Then you get to your ending fund balance for the year. So for the borough, for 2023, a good way to look at fund balance is your cash that you're holding. Fund balance could also include escrows, which I know Jess was saying may be coming. Not in '23, they're not included in here. They also can include payroll liabilities. There were no payroll liabilities in 2023. So the fund balance that you're seeing there, that last line item, is essentially your cash balance available to you at the end of December. If we look back up there at, oh, one other thing I wanted to mention. I'm kinda gonna sprinkle in how we audit some of these areas, just to make it a little bit clearer for you. So as we're talking about cash, we do confirm all of your cash accounts with the local institutions. So that would be ACMB and then...
You did say cash balance at the end of December.
Yeah, 2023.
2023.
Yes, yep. So we send confirmations to those banks confirming amounts. We test any outstanding checks and deposits as well. Then if we go back up to the revenues, just kinda looking at that category of items, just wanna highlight a couple of items there. The first category are taxes collected. So this would be your real estate taxes, maybe earned income taxes that you get from YATB. We also confirm 100% of those taxes with the local tax collection agencies during the course of our audit. Other items that we confirm that you might see listed in there or that are encompassed in there would be fines. We confirm the liquid fuels dollars with the state. We confirm your pension state aid. We confirm your fire relief fund. So there's a lot of confirmation of items that we perform during the course of our audit. It actually totaled to about 60% of your revenues that we directly confirmed with an outside party. And then again, looking at expenses, it's kinda reported that category there. You can see that... They're split out there between like the big ones, our general government, public safety is where fire and police would lie, goes into highways and streets, and then, of course, the different expenses related to your proprietary funds. We do a good deal of testing on expenses as well. We select a large sample. And this year, we tested about 63% of your expenses. That would be testing to invoices, copies of canceled checks to the bank statement, et cetera. So then, again, that gets you to your excess or deficit of revenues over expenses. So for the year there, you can see you had an excess of revenues over expenses of about $291,000. If you look at it by fund, though, the general fund actually had a deficit, meaning expenses exceeded revenue. But because the other funds had that excess, it kinda covered the general fund, which can happen from year to year. Okay? Any question on that statement? The one that I just passed out there this evening with kind of the orange highlighted block there, what this is showing is it's almost a comparative year-over-year analysis. So we're starting with the 23 numbers that we just looked at. Now, we are carving out your fiduciary fund, the pension plan that I talked about, because there is a good amount of transactions that happen in there that aren't truly dollars of the borough, right? They're pensioners, the past employees. And then we compare it to the 2022 numbers. So year-over-year, your change was negative. Don't take that in a bad way. I know it's kind of harsh to say negative, but it just was a decrease from the prior year of about $273,000. And then below that line, it kinda shows you what makes up that change. So year-over-year, your revenues decreased about $87,000. Now, if you look at the federal revenues line item, that's all ARPA funding. So you received $163,000 of ARPA funding in 2022, which was not existent in '23. So right there is a good chunk of why your revenues went down. And then if you look at your expenses, your expenses did go up $184,000. However, one item to point out is you paid four quarters' worth of invoices to needers for trash collection in '23. In '22, you only paid three. And right that, right there, kinda tells you one of the big swings. I mean, there's other things factored in there, but if you wanna pinpoint the large ones, that would be what it's related to. So take that for what it's worth. Sometimes it can be beneficial. The orange highlight there, what that is showing is that is your total tax collection dollars. So year-over-year, from '22 to '23, tax collection went down $17,000. Really, most of that's related to transfer tax, you know? Depends on the amount of houses being sold throughout the, from year to year, so. But then you have an offset there of earned income tax went up about $11,000, too. So it's kind of offsetting itself there. Any questions that stick out looking at those items? Then the final two letters here we're gonna go over. I'm gonna start. The first letter I'm gonna start with has a bold, heavy, titled "Significant Audit Matters." So this is the letter we refer to as our required communications with governance. Governance being yourselves as council and management. All of these are items that we are required to communicate to you all. I will say that absence of an item in this letter is just as important as if there were an item, and you're kinda see that as we go through here. The letter starts off by saying, by talking about qualitative aspects of accounting practices. Most importantly, the fact that you report on the cash basis of accounting versus the accrual basis of accounting, that is disclosed in one of the notes to your DCED report. So essentially, on the cash basis of accounting, you record revenues when they're received and expenses when they are paid. It's as simple as that. The next paragraph talks about accounting estimates. Because you report on the cash basis of accounting, you have no estimates. The next section is difficulties encountered in performing the audit. Happy to report that there were none. And the last paragraph there on that page talks about corrected and uncorrected misstatements. So the corrected misstatements are attached to this letter here, and we'll look at them in a minute. There were no uncorrected misstatements. Top of page two, then, talks about disagreements with management. Again, there were none. Management representations. We did obtain a signed representation letter with various items noted in it, representing items related to our audit. To our knowledge, there were no other consultations with any other accountants or a second opinion. And then the letter just concludes with the fact that throughout the course of the year, we may be in communication with members of the borough, but none of those communications would affect our retention or independence as your auditors. So I said before, the entries are attached here to the letter. There are seven adjusting entries, I'm sorry, eight adjusting entries and seven reclass entries. Kind of the difference between those entries, an adjusting entry more so affects your bottom line, where a reclass entry is just getting an item in a proper spot for the DCED, the state likes items in the proper bucket, or the red flag items. So to give you kind of an idea of the impact of the audit entries, which all of these would be ones that I consider completely normal audit-type entries. When we received the books, when we began the audit, you were reporting a net income of about $182,000. Our adjustments affected net income, increased it by $6,000. So it bumped your net income to up about $188,000. So to me, that tells me the records you're getting on a monthly basis to make decisions are reliable and what you're making your decisions on are very, you know, are pretty accurate. I can tell you the adjustments that kind of totaled that $6,000 are related to adjusting payroll liabilities to actual, which is an entry that actually comes from the outside payroll vendor, and it's just not quite accurate. It's not clearing out payroll liabilities like it should. So there's two big entries here that kind of adjust it to where it needs to be. Then the final letter is our management letter. So as I said before, our audit is not to provide an opinion on internal controls. However, we do need to gain an understanding of them throughout the course of our audit in order to perform our audit effectively. So during the course of our audit, if we come across any noted deficiencies in internal control, we are to report them in this letter here as your management letter. So there are two items listed here. The first is segregation of duties. All local municipalities of your size have this comment, so don't take it to heart. Many do. In order to remove this, you would have to hire two or three more individuals to remove it. Essentially, what it is saying is the folks in the office have the capability to hand over a transaction from its inception to its, you know, closure. Collecting cash from a resident, recording it on the deposit slip, taking it to the bank, recording it on your books, et cetera. There may be instances where it's segregated, but it needs to be 100% segregated in order to remove this comment. You are doing almost everything that you can to overcome, to mitigate this risk, if you will, oversight. So council oversight is the number one thing that you can do to mitigate the segregation of duties. For example, you have cosigners on checks. You are reviewing monthly financial information. The one recommendation that we would make to implement is the bank statement reconciliations when they are prepared by the secretary treasurer, that they be reviewed by a council member. Or maybe a change in thought is to maybe have an office clerk, admin assistant, prepare the bank rec. The secretary treasurer manager can review, and then a very high level can be done by council. I know you all have jobs and you're busy as well, but that oversight is just very, very important that you're reviewing these items on a timely basis and then initiating and dating your review as well. I recommend it to be someone financial-minded and someone who is not cosigning checks. Again, we're talking about the segregation of duties so that more than one set of eyes are looking at things. The second item on page two, I know is in the works, so I'm gonna speak very briefly on it, or it's on a to-do list, I should say, is the allocation of public works, the sanitation payroll expenses. So right now, the time spent by the administrative staff in conducting billing for sewer and trash, as well as if there's any public works guys going out, or gals going out in the field, you know, spending time on sewer or trash-related activities, it is not being allocated. Like when you saw the numbers in the financial report, it's not being allocated as an expense to those two buckets. It's being posted, if you will, to the general fund. So the suggestion is to maybe allocate on a quarterly basis, or if you really wanna make it accurate, which I would recommend, is on an actual timesheet. If they spend two hours on billing, two hours go to trash, and then whatever other time goes to just general borough admin-type activities. And I know Jessica is working on that, but something's been talked about.
So you're recommending our, the office staff be billing it that way, as well as our public works?
If they are spending time...
On garbage and sewer?
Yeah. If they are spending time on things not highway-related.
Like Christmas trees, you know, or whatever. Does that include like limbs and things like that? That would be considered garbage?
No, that's not in our garbage contract, so that would be...
But I mean, that's our guys who'd be doing that. So that's, would that be right, Jessica, to keep that in the sewer, or for the sewer and the garbage fund?
Our public works employees have timesheets where they separate out everything they do on a day-to-day basis. I think we just need to capture a little more detail, because right now, we're allocating sewer expenses on a percent basis. That was created several years ago, where the public works employees, 55, 45. And I think your suggestion is that we are having a more true allocation to what they're having.
Yep.
They're doing. So that's what we've been working on this new year.
So those were the remarks that I had for this evening for the audit. So like I said, all the filings have been complete. This was kind of the final stamp here on 2023.
Thank you for doing this again. How many years have you been...
Our firm has been many, many years. This probably is my 12th.
No, I remember. I knew it was the least eight because I've seen you for that long, so. That's all right. No, you do a great job. Thank you. Thank you so much for coming.
Yeah, I've seen the borough go through some change, and I just don't even think you have a good idea of Jess.
You can be excused then.
We're very glad to hear that. I guess we'll see you next year.
You're gonna be around for a while, right? Okay, we'll move on to the next. We need approval of the March 27 meeting minutes. Have a copy of it. Just look them over, make sure everything's okay, and I'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion, too.
Should we just, like you mentioned last time, just, yeah, all in favor? Yeah, let's just do that. Is that all right?
All in favor? Any nays?
That was quick. That was fast. Just so it's not too fast.
That's right. Yeah, we just made sure, like, you know, maybe put a hand up a little, just in case, you know? Anyway. Okay, so next, announcements, communication. Mayor, do you have anything you wanna bring up?
The only thing I wanted to ask is about an email that supposedly was sent, that I didn't send.
I received one, and I don't know who sent it.
I was told that it was a spoof, because Kathy said that, Kathy told me that she had gotten a few through the years. And I did see that email was sent from not my email. So I just wanted to make everybody aware that that was not...
She was right on top of it. I got a phone call right after it, and whoever else, and said, "Don't open it."
I wish somebody would've notified me, though.
I did leave a voice message on your phone.
Oh, nothing was on my phone.
Okay.
You left one online. Just change your, like I said earlier, change your password. I'm on my third password. I've been here since January, so I'm on my third password. Just change your password.
All right, Jess, do you have any announcements you wanna make?
I do. So we're still continuing to do brush and limb pickup. Just a reminder, no yard waste, no grass clippings. If you haven't had any problems, just wanna remind everybody. And then, this is a reminder about the dog park. We wanna ask residents to please clean up after your dogs. We supply dog bags and trash cans at the dog park for you to do so. Now, the guys are out mowing, and they've found a lot of dog poop that they would like to not be stepping in. So please, please clean up after the dogs, your dogs. And then reminder for e-cycling this Saturday, 4:13, nine to 12, at the maintenance building.
Jess, just one, talk about the weeds, you know, what the people are responsible for up to the curb or the street, and the spraying's gonna be happening soon.
Yeah, so from the curb in is the resident's responsibility. We do have someone, they started yesterday, spraying the streets and things. And we're working on getting the streets swept so we can efficiently spray those weeds. That's all things that we're working on right now.
Right, thanks. Yeah, so if you have them coming up between your, you know, pavement and things, you're responsible for those. And you can just, there's solutions other than, you know, expensive ones to do it. There's things you can use like Clorox and things like that. You can look online. There's ways you can do it that it's not as costly. Okay, now, public comments. Phil Block, you're up.
Yeah, I'm gonna stretch.
I'm getting old and decrep. Well, I haven't been here for about five years. I wonder why that was. I only ever had one conversation with my neighbor, Daniel Colman Jr. Always tell that story. It only lasted about a minute. The last thing he said to me was, "I'm gonna kill you." So I guess my personality and his clash a little, so. Anyway, I know I've been critical of Mr. Sherrystown. By the way, I'm here because my wife has given me special permission to make a public appearance. She doesn't want me to have any, any public life anymore for reasons that I'm not gonna mention. Rob might go a little bit, and Steve might go a little bit. But anyway, I hate apathy. I hate that when people don't take responsibility for what goes on in their local community, their government. That's why I've had very harsh comments about Dr. Sherrystown. I thought that it had the lowest amount of civic virtue that I ever saw in any place I ever lived. I could use a lot more civic pride also. And sometimes you have to hit a rock bottom before people start to rebound and start taking pride in responsibility for the community. And I think with the election of some new councilman last fall, I think McSherrystown is on the rebound. I think the plague years are over, as I call it. I refer to the years in which Colman was running the borough. I refer to them as the plague years. I can't imagine why any borough would elect somebody like that, but, you know, the political body, which is all the citizens of the borough, it's just like your own physical body. You produce antibodies, and the antibodies fight invading, things that invade your body. And if the people don't take an active role in their community and are observant and on guard about any possible malfeasance that's gonna arise in their community, and they don't take an active involvement in voting, then somebody like Daniel Colman can get elected. You can see, he was running the borough for his own benefit, you know, with his buddy, Michael Woods. Somewhere down the line, they eventually get what they deserve. I did everything I could to make sure.
So, yeah, you're here for about this thing?
That's not why I'm here.
Oh, okay.
I just, I hadn't been here in five years, so I thought you'd grant me a...
Sure.
Try to explain why I haven't been here in five years. But anyway, I received a notice in the mail last year, or last week, that Columbia Gas wanted to raise their rates again. Now, Columbia Gas has owned McSherrystown 15 years. I lost count of how many times they raised their rates. When I moved to McSherrystown, I thought, wow, natural gas heat I never had before. This is a real bargain to heat your house. Now, 15 years later, it costs about twice as much. And this is one of my gas bills from the winter, December. December, I bought $29.57 worth of natural gas from Columbia Gas. So natural gas is cheap. Columbia Gas charged me $163 to deliver $29 worth of natural gas to me. And now they wanna raise the delivery cost of gas. They can't raise the price of the gas because there's competition. You can change your gas supply. You cannot change who delivers the gas to you. It's always gonna be Columbia Gas. You can change your gas supply. You cannot change who delivers the gas to you. It's always going to be Columbia Gas. They have a monopoly. And anytime you have a monopoly, it's open to abuses. Now you have a body up in Harrisburg in the Attorney General's Office who are supposed to represent the citizens when a utility wants to go to PUC and ask for a rate increase. Now obviously they've been doing not a very good job. That body is called the Pennsylvania Office of Consumer Advocate. I've been in contact with them twice during the past week. And they've told me that if enough people in a given area contact them, either call them or email them, that they will schedule a hearing with the PUC in that area. Now here it probably held out the fire hall because it can seat a lot of people. And, uh, that's their promise to me. Well, it's not actually a promise. That's what they're telling me. And I know that the PUC does put rate increases on hold and they will hold hearings. So I would like to see a hearing held in this area. And I would like to see the people in McSherrystown, uh, get involved in requesting that hearing. So that's why I've been walking around. I just started a couple of days ago. I'm getting a very positive response from the people I've talked to. I would say about ninety percent of them want to either call up this office, the Office of Consumer Advocate, or to email them and take them at their work, give them, empower them because they, I think, I had a long, a few, well, I don't know, maybe one, seven, eight years. You know, I filed a formal complaint and I actually went up to Harrisburg and started a meeting around the table. And I was invited there because I was a formal complainant. And I was surrounded by a dozen lawyers and they just passed papers back and forth, completely ignoring myself, you know, women from Hanover who were also filed a complaint. And, uh, we didn't even get to testify or ask questions about it. So what we need to do is get a judge from the PUC down here and let the people come out and let them hear, well, how these rate increases are impacting us. They keep asking for a rate increase to pay for a project. They have this big pipeline construction project going on now. I'm not sure why at this time other than the fact that Columbia Gas has now been bought out three, four years ago, I think, four or five years ago, by a big company called Nisource with trades on Wall Street. And they write about how they're a growth stock and their profits keep going up and their dividends keep going up. Well, obviously, they're not really a public utility anymore. So.
So, so Phil, what can we do? I mean, as a group or what, what would you like to see?
This is one, this is one coming. Three things. I'll give this, Jess. I'll give this to Jess. These are the three things that I want the borough, how the borough can help out.
Okay.
Now, I'm gonna do what I'm gonna, anybody who knows me knows that I'm gonna do what I'm gonna do whether the borough's helping me out or not. I'm gonna be making phone calls. I'm gonna be making noise if I decide that's what I want to do. The borough can pass a resolution opposing another rate increase like Columbia Gas. And I think I was talking to Jess the other day and she wasn't sure whether, whether the borough could do something like that. So I went home and I just Googled something. And the first thing that came up online was there's two cities in Illinois, Champaign and Urbana. Cities plan to intervene in rate case. The rate is alarm, rate increase is alarming and unreasonable. Another municipalities are playing the polar funds to pay for an attorney to intervene in the Illinois American Water Company's proposed rate increase. Now I'm not asking McSherrystown to hire a lawyer to go fight this. They could with, with, with their rights. I'm just asking you to pass a resolution. Just asking you to pass a resolution which will give some impetus to my efforts to get people, and it gives some publicity too. Now I'm gonna write a letter to the editor of the desk for a while. I've done that many times before. And I'm going to, uh, I mean, I walk around by, by myself and obviously I'm losing my voice now because I was already talking a lot today. But if you just pass a resolution proposing another rate increase, McSherrystown has a lot of people on fixed incomes. They have a, it's not in the fluid community at all. And these rate increases just become an increasing burden on the people in McSherrystown. What else can they do? You can put the information on my flyer. You can put the information on my flyer on the website. It gives the phone numbers and the email address of the Pennsylvania Office of Consumer Advocate. That way people can just come. I'm not gonna get to everybody's house in McSherrystown.
Can you, can you do me a favor and say the phone numbers out loud and the email address so that way?
I can do it, uh, I can do it for the TV there.
Yeah, there you go. Go ahead.
This is the phone numbers for the Pennsylvania Office of Consumer Advocate in Harrisburg, part of the Attorney General's Office. They have an eight-hundred number, six-eight-four-six-five-six-zero. And the regular number is area code seven-one-seven, seven-eight-three-five-zero-four-eight. You have an email address. It's pretty easy to remember. Consumer at P A O C A dot org. That's consumer at P A O C A dot org. It's Pennsylvania Office of Consumer Advocate. So if you just take the initials from this office, dot org, that's gonna be correct. So if you could put that up on the website, people can just look at your website. They know who to contact if they want to complain to.
Did you say that's also on our bill? All those, those emails and stuff is also on the bill?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Oh, no?
Well, Columbia Gas doesn't want to make it easy for you.
Just checking, just checking.
They don't want people, I mean, you don't have a lot of time. You know, I'm sure the PUC is gonna grant a stay in order for the, uh, whole hearings or whatever. But no, Columbia Gas does not want to make it easy for you. So they're not gonna, they're not gonna tell you.
And they're talking about getting this increase in May.
Well, they're gonna put a hole in that shit.
But anyway, that's, that's tentative.
More people complain about it. And there are gonna be formal complaints. And some businesses are gonna file, uh, formal complaints and they're gonna have their lawyers come up there, you know, and sit around the table. They're gonna thrash members. Because, because the business rates can, you know, uh, can impact the business's profit line. And then, uh, there's one other thing I request from the borough. This is to, I don't care whether they do this or not, but I want the borough to designate me as ombudsman for public utilities. This way, when I call up the bureaucrats that I've been calling up, I can say, this is Phil Block, McSherrystown Borough Ombudsman. That means somebody who takes complaints, by the way.
Yeah.
Ombudsman for public utilities.
Right.
Now, I'll probably call myself that anyway. I'll call myself the unofficial ombudsman if you don't think it would be official ombudsman. But it just gives me.
A little more clout.
A little more authority. Make people say, hey, I got a call from the McSherrystown Borough.
Right.
Those are the three things that I request of the borough.
Yep. All right, thank you. Anything else, Phil, that you wanted to say or, okay?
So this is the flyer I've been handing out. Anybody here, anybody here interested in complaining about the consumer gas rate? Just ask me to get you one before you leave. I already gave you one there. Bill, anybody else want one?
All right, thanks, Phil.
Real quick question to Luke. Can we, uh, rate, prepare a resolution for that? Is there something we can do?
You can. That's something you desire, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll probably talk about, maybe next meeting, right?
Officially. Intervene. Oh, that's different, yeah.
That's different?
Appointing him as the.
The ombudsman?
Yeah. That's different from intervening in the rate case, but.
Is that, is that possible? What's involved?
I've never heard of it happening before, but it doesn't mean it's impossible.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to have a little discussion.
Something new every day.
We'll have to do our homework on our own and then talk about this some time here, so.
I think Keith. Phil, we'll get back to you. Hey, Phil?
Yeah, yeah.
Talk about?
Phil, we'll get back to you on the ombudsman part. We're, we're not sure about that.
Keith has a question.
Did you, did you spell that?
What, what is, what is, what is the word again?
Yeah, could you spell that? Spell that.
O N B U D S N A N.
B U D S.
It's a person who takes complaints. I was an ombudsman when I went to college, up in Hundredth and Junior College.
Well, I've, okay, the, the person that's.
I was an ombudsman for the Pennsylvania Criminal Society and went into the, actually, the jury.
Well, if I, if I can say this, um, I moved here to McSherrystown back in, um, two thousand thirteen. So things I've heard, complaints I've heard, I think I was the honorary ombudsman of, of McSherrystown. Um, whatever it is, I was it. Okay. But I just want to say that, you know, you had mentioned past names, previous people from Woods to, um, Colgan. And so I'm on the board now and I think we've heard all the negativities and things like that. I'm really interested in helping and even as a board, but I think I got a commitment and gave a commitment to the board that we are moving in a positive direction and we don't want to move backwards. Okay? So the things we want to leave out, I'm just speaking, I guess, if I'm not speaking for the board, I'm speaking for myself. I'd rather leave out the negativities of past members, actions that they, right?
I think McSherrystown is on the rebound now.
Okay, action, yeah, I'm saying actions that may have taken place or things like that. We want to let that go, leave that respect.
I'll just explain why I haven't been here.
Right, no, I'm, I'm gonna agree with you. I'm just saying, right, there's not, I know this, I'm gonna agree with it.
Yeah, let's not have a conversation.
We want to make sure that we're moving in the positive like we've been doing.
Let's, let's let it at that. Thank you.
Yeah, I need to comment on that.
Go ahead.
Only because, um, I, I came back through, uh, McSherrystown about, um, a year and a half ago. And I, I, because of some of these, uh, councilmen, I lost an enormous amount of money. Um, specifically Mr. Woods, specifically Dan Colgan. I'm not over it. I'm well not over it.
Then it's your right to speak.
And, and, and I'm not, and I'm not took negativity because I can tell you this council has done so much for us. Um, I mean, just the, the, um, uh, communication alone is night and deck. And, and, you know, there's always issues you're gonna have in, in, in smaller governments. But I mean, this was actually criminal. And they didn't do it just to make. There's more people out there and they're not over it yet. And they're looking to you guys to see what's gonna shake out from any of this. Are you guys gonna go more down that? I'm not seeing that. You're not going down that line as far as what that was going on.
I said what I said because the camera's on and instead of hearing it later, everybody can hear it now. I think this group here, we're committed to each other to do the things that McSherrystown, the people of McSherrystown wants us to do. And we're doing it with the goal of whatever happened last board or whatever, it's gonna stay there.
Residual.
We, I understand, and we, we're working on that. But I just want everybody to know, we are working on that.
But it's, it's hard to, I mean, it's hard for us.
This is a board, we're working together, and I think that we all have an understanding that we want to move forward and do what we were going into doing.
We do, we do. And that's, and I'm moving forward too, but I still, we still got some issues back there. And I think it's gonna come back.
But we're, we're good and strong here together. I think so. So.
Yeah.
The commitment's there and I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
Okay. All right, next, yeah, sure. Karen Walter Bowling.
Yes, hi there.
Yes, Karen Walter Bowling. McSherrystown's my hometown. I don't live here anymore though. Um, but I am the president of the, um, McSherrystown Heritage Day Association.
Okay, yeah.
And, um, the reason we're here is we thought it'd be nice to introduce ourselves. This is a positive thing.
I know, I know some of the members, but yeah.
Yeah, some, some of you probably already know what we do. Um, but I've come up, we've come up with a, like a little information thing that tells how long we've been in existence, like since, since two thousand five, what we've done. And we do like three major projects. We do the banners, like the red banners that are up there, the Christmas snowflake lights. And, um, what's the other one?
Flags.
Oh, yeah, the flag displays. Yeah. So we do those on the special holidays. So I have these and you could see that everybody could see them out. And, um, like I say, on the back, our mission is to brighten the streets of McSherrystown. And, uh, we have a small committee of six. And, um, our names are all in the back there. So if you could see that.
And, you know, we have this quarterly newsletter that, you know, maybe we can promote this to the community, maybe even people, yeah.
Yeah, we, um, we, um, exist solely from contributions of businesses and, uh, organizations in town. And they've really been generous with us to supply what we need for maintenance and upkeep. Um, as a courtesy for the borough motor, yeah, not motors, mowers, uh, for the park. I have a list of the dates when we put the flags up so that you know ahead of time when.
Yeah, Jessica will take care of that. That's nice of you.
I don't know if any of you have any questions about the.
Have you made any progress at all with hometown heroes banners?
There's a barrier for some reason with, um, that, that, about the poles. There's a whole issue of the using their poles. Even though they wouldn't involve electricity, this is the use of the poles.
Nope, they don't.
It's a shame because I know through Big Leville, every one of their poles has a badge on it.
What do they use in other, what, what poles do they use in other towns? Don't they?
Mostly utility poles.
Yeah, so.
They own the pole, so I don't know about any, I think I've never had any trouble.
You know, the, uh, the, the poles that we already have the banners on? Maybe, maybe recontacting them, saying, hey, can we put, can we put the hometown hero banner on that existing pole that you already have permission to use on the opposite side, like say on the, on the sidewalk side?
We may have already addressed that.
Did we look at that for so?
We can relook at that. We can, we can try to revise that and go through that again, but it was some.
When you're, um, also, when you're putting out the flags and things like that, do you, um, get volunteers, like Boy Scouts or whatever, or is just the six of you doing that?
Uh, we just get together and do it. It takes like twenty minutes to pull them off. Um, I mean, we're open to having anybody else who would want to volunteer. You know, can show up on any of those dates and help us out.
Because you might want to put like looking for volunteers that helps. See how the town reacts, I think.
If you could.
I have one question and, and you can let me know. Somebody said you have a shed that's on the church property. Did they ever approach you about this, moving it or something? I think I.
There was an issue all of a sudden with somebody putting things on the roof or moving the shed or, um, but nobody's actually come.
Yeah, somebody, somebody approached me about.
Somebody did to me.
Okay, there we go. If you want, Mary's next anyway, so maybe you can.
Yeah, yeah. So, um.
That's fine.
Before we go on that though, if, if there's any projects that you have that you'd be interested in us kind of looking into, we thought maybe, is there a need for any benches in the dog park or the walking track area? I mean, if there is, we'd be willing to buy a couple of benches if you could install and do those costs. Because it involves concrete and all that. And I don't think that we can.
I'm just saying, I don't know if you have a need for those or not.
We have ourselves.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take that into consideration. Yeah, we'll talk about it. See, but thanks for offering that.
Yeah, so.
Maybe the walking track.
Um, Mary, do you want to talk about the?
Will you walk around that track?
People take a break?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Yep. You appreciate that.
Thank you for everything you do.
Yep, we do, we do appreciate.
Somebody came to you, didn't they? Well, yeah, they did. Well, then tell them.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just getting wind of this and I, I don't know if I should have brought it up or not, but I did.
And somebody came to me. So this is like, um, you told me, you gave me a name, Rob, Noel, but.
Bill Noel.
And he's the one that talked to me tonight.
Okay, good.
I mentioned it to Karen. He said something about the Boy Scouts want us to move it.
Right.
We own it and we have permission from the church, nunciation, to put it there. And nobody.
It's the nunciation's property.
Yes, yes. And we have permission. So basically, until somebody approaches us formally and, or the church revokes.
Right.
We go nowhere.
Until somebody comes in and says something, I'm not doing anything.
It had already been moved once.
Pardon me?
Where, where from?
It, it was, it was at another section of that parking lot.
Why could we move it from, well, we have to have somebody to talk to and nobody's talking to us other than tonight, me.
Okay, Bill, yeah. He's the one that approached me. So between, I don't know if he represents.
He doesn't sound like he had the authority to say, this is what we want to do and we've done this. He just said, this is what he knows, basically.
Yeah, somebody contact the rectory or something. I'd rather who's in charge of the shit. I don't know.
You said it was Father Sherrill.
I'm sorry, Pastor Kim Gordon. I, uh, did call the rectory and talked to, oh my gosh, the porter. I'm sorry, Pastor Kim Gordon, I uh did call the rectory and talked to, oh my gosh, reporter Cindy.
Oh, yeah.
About it, and she was gonna try and find out about it and have somebody contact me, which nobody has.
Okay.
I mean, I have, they went, they didn't think the, the building was ours, I have the invoice.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Bought it, so I do know that it is ours.
Right.
And I'm waiting for someone who wants to contact us.
Yep, okay, I, I.
She has my phone number on, she was gonna try and get somebody to call me, I have no idea where we'd move it. We, so we didn't have a building, we immediately.
Maybe they can.
Is it, did we make it clear what's in the shed?
Right, yeah.
What's in the shed, Joe knows what's in the shed.
Yeah, he does, right.
Yeah.
It's the Christmas.
Okay, because it involves those kind of things, so frankly.
So, yeah, it'll happen, I mean, if, if it happens that way, we have to think of a place where we would move it to that maybe it's not on their property.
Yeah, well, we'll wait till we find out what's going on there.
No problem, just so you're aware of it, and I'm glad you, you are now, it's not on me.
See, you're walking your dog off, you know, keep you posted.
Right, thanks, okay, yep, thank you all.
Oh, one last thing, as a citizen of McSherrystown who's been in the dark for a couple years. Thank you for your circular, for your, thank you, I know when to do things now and what's going on, I can't say that enough.
No, thanks.
Okay, that's beautiful.
We appreciate the positive response.
That's what it's all about.
Yeah, all right.
Gotta get that out there. That's Linda's, Linda's doing.
That's right, Linda's, they've done a great job putting it together, okay.
We may have to make it bigger.
We got plans for the future in this.
I was just saying, have you had community input on anything else they wanna see in a flyer?
Yes, that's why I said we may have to expand it.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
May become a pamphlet.
That's a new reaction to it.
Good, good, awesome.
Okay, anybody else that wanted to say, make a comment before we move to new business? Go ahead, Tom.
I just wanna take a second to let everybody know our new uh nameplate holders. Linda's husband Randy made them for us, we bought, you know, paid for materials, but he took the time to make them and stain them. I'd like to thank Linda and Randy for doing that for us.
Thank you, yep. We're all the same here, aren't we, that's great.
That's neat.
Okay, thanks.
And you didn't even notice.
Well, it is tough, yeah, yeah, you see they're, they're all the same now, yeah.
That's pretty, that is nice.
Yep, thanks for bringing that up, okay.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you.
New business here, we have to make an approval of MBIT contract for the IT services. Jess, you wanna say anything about this?
Yes.
Um, I think I, I know I sent the proposal out to everybody, um, the proposal was for a monthly managed service contract. The only thing I can stress is that the police department has not had an IT person since the beginning of the year. It's a necessity that we do something about this, we haven't updated any passwords or done anything like that. We also aren't getting any of our information backed up at this point, so I just, I do wanna stress that this is an important decision that we need to make as soon as possible. And the police department has been asking for, for a long time, a couple, since the beginning of the year, they have been asking. Um, and I did what I could, we had a couple people come out and look at what we have here. Um, and one person came back and said they just didn't have the staff to take us on, one person said there was too much upgrading, they didn't, they weren't interested in doing it. And then I had several people just not contact me back, so I have this proposal, I've done everything I can to get other proposals. Littlestown Borough uses this company.
And they, they have high regard for.
They have very good reviews for them, yeah. And then, and this company has all the clearances for CGS and what they need for our police department.
So.
Is there any other questions regarding?
If we just get the cost per month.
You have that, yeah.
Per month, it's one thousand one hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Yeah, I know.
It's a necessary, for, for now, have to do, yeah.
And this would actually put our information, back it up on the cloud, whereas now we're using little discs that we have to change out every day. So we're not as secure as we could be, I think we definitely need to look into that kinda thing, having our, our information backed up. You know, just in case we'd have any loss and then um it's just, it's definitely something we need to look into.
So we need a, a motion to approve MBIT.
I just wanted to ask one, there's not gonna be any interruption in, in the transition to this?
No, they said they'll come in, it's gonna take them, they're thinking it's gonna take them a couple days. Two eight-hour days for the police, two eight-hour days for the borough side. Um, and that was another comment that we, they made is that we work all as one, we're on one network, we have one server, so they wanna secure us as one. And that was kind of where some of the cost is coming in, but it's, it's necessary the way we have our, our system set up currently.
So the um, the new equipment that the police department's gonna get uh down the road, will then, will they have also? Will that include another server for them, or are we gonna stay as one?
There's a lot to discuss with that in the future, when that comes about. When that comes about, we will have to take that to our current IT provider and let them know the increases that there, the increase in their work that there's going to be. And they're gonna have to come back to us and tell us if it's gonna be an additional cost. That stuff is not currently included. Right now, this includes two borough PCs, the antivirus, the web protection, cloud backup, um, monthly scheduled onsite visits. Any calls to them, anytime we call them, it's all covered under this, we don't pay anything outside of this unless it's equipment upgrades, specific equipment.
So they got the support.
Yep, and um the network and infrastructure, firewall management, and then for the police side, it covers three computers or four computers. Car laptops, their server, their web back, cloud backup, all that stuff as well for them.
Wow, the existing, the existing equipment, so then, so then it will just have to re-address it with new equipment.
Yeah.
But I'm sure they can give us an idea now of what it would cost, instead of waiting, they can still give us an idea, okay, when you're ready, it's, it's gonna cost X amount of dollars.
Yeah, they can, and I think um we need to discuss the grant, I think the council needs to come, be brought up to speed on what all is involved in that grant. To be able to help make some of those decisions with that grant, so.
To pay for the upgrades?
To pay, that, that's gonna be an additional to this IT contract. They have the capability to, MBIT has the capability to handle the changes when we get the, the upgrades with the grant. But it isn't currently included in the price they've given us.
First things first.
Yeah, this is the first step.
Right, you gotta get started here on this, so.
I'll make the motion to uh, to go with uh.
MBIT.
IT services. Yeah, services.
Monthly, monthly.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
All right. And just.
Just wanted to say I did truly check into it, they, they're, they're out of York, their main office is Yorkton. They, they, it looks like they're gonna really do a good job.
He came here, he did a full walkthrough, looked at everything, um, I spoke to him, Chief Kitzner spoke to him. Then Chief Kitzner and I both spoke about it and we both felt comfortable with his abilities. And that was what was important at this point.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
All in favor, right?
All in favor? Any days?
Ooh, MBIT says may.
Thank you for that. Yeah. I love it. Okay, uh, the next, we're gonna need a motion to authorize the borough manager to open escrow accounts, Jess, you wanna just?
I'm sorry, I checked the wrong thing, go ahead.
Uh, we have several projects that we're working with the engineer with and solicitor with that are coming up, that are gonna require um review and inspections. Columbi gas is one of them and some other ones, and um our engineers recommending that we get an escrow. So we don't currently have any accounts open for that, and we wanna open us, we wanna be able to open accounts for those and keep the, before keeping clean.
An escrow account where?
It would be with ACMB Bank, just where all of our other accounts are, with the exact same signers that are currently on our accounts. And those um, the money will go in from the per, you know, Columbi, if it's Columbi gas, and then we pay the expenses straight out of those.
If there's any expense.
If there's, if and when there's expenses, yes.
It's cleaner that way, right, Jess?
And so for each project, it'll be a separate escrow account.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, I make the motion to.
Do we, do we know?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, how many accounts?
Is it three?
Right now, we have three, we're, three, we're discussing, three separate projects that we need to have escrow accounts open for.
One, and one of the projects came back to life.
And Luke has prepared the escrow agreement for each of them to cover the borough, they'll sign all that, and then that's, that has the amount in it that they'd have to give at that point.
Okay, that's great.
Was there, was there any indication when Turkey Hill was gonna start?
They're in, it's in review.
Oh, still in review, okay.
They haven't submitted their plan yet, so it's not actually in review yet, the review period hasn't begun.
They haven't even submitted?
Yeah.
No.
Steve, what's going on with Turkey Hill?
Upgrade, upgrade.
I just found out about this.
Somebody else.
It went quiet.
It was gonna be a different.
Okay.
Okay.
So you made a.
He made a motion.
I made a motion, yeah.
Yep, Steve made a motion, okay, um, okay.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, next, the approval of Be There Environmental Services LLC contract updates for the porta potty services. All right, Jess, go ahead. Speaking of poop.
So um, we've had a lot of complaints about the porta pots, this is ongoing, this isn't just this year. And we've done things every time we get the complaints to try, when our previous mayor was here, he tried to handle it as well, the same issues. Um, so I'm, we have to do something about the, they're saying that they're, people are saying they're unsanitary, we've had several complaints about that. We have a handicap unit at the dog park and um we've had some misuse of that, people are like staying in it for a period of time. Throwing things down in it and ruining the guy's truck that pumps them out and some things like that. So he, he had recommended maybe we not have that handicap unit there, if it's a smaller unit, maybe someone won't be staying inside of it for a period of time. And then the other thing is, we have pretty warm winters here, people are using our parks all year long. One of the complaints was that the porta pots aren't getting pumped over the winter because our contract is November. Um, it's only March through November, so he doesn't go, and he has been servicing them for us even though his contract doesn't say he's gonna get paid for that. And that was another thing, is considering maybe that we have the porta pot services either all year or we do enforce that he picks them up. He hasn't picked them up, he didn't wanna have to pick them up, he said he tried putting locks on them, people cut the locks off, he's had a lot of problems with it. Um, so my, I just, I got a price for upping the cleaning to two times a week.
By looking at that.
It adds an additional fifty dollars to each porta pot. And he here picks them up or he cleans them one time a week over the winter, but it's gonna add additional costs. So it'll go from three hundred and forty-five dollars a month to four hundred and eighty dollars a month if we have the four regular units with the two times a week cleaning.
Does that include any additional TP, toilet paper? Cause one of the complaints is.
One, it is one of the complaints, and every time they service it, they, they put the toilet paper in, they pump it, they do all, they do the whole thing, everything to it at that point.
But people might be taking the toilet paper.
That's what I'm thinking, people are stealing toilet paper.
Yeah, yeah.
That's one of the main complaints is there's never any toilet paper.
These are rough times, but, yeah.
I know.
So, you know. Two times a week should help, should help.
And this, this is in a reflection.
Thursday and Monday, right?
If I, if we're gonna do the two times a week, I think they should be cleaned Thursday so they're good for the weekend, they should be cleaned after they've been used heavily on the weekend or Monday.
Right.
Um, this is not a reflection on Be There, I don't want that, it to be portrayed like that. He's, I, I've contacted him every time he's gone out, he goes out immediately after I contact him.
Has he mentioned that he's had this problem in other?
No, he said he doesn't, he doesn't have this problem and he doesn't hear as many complaints either, any other area, so.
See, this is a community thing, people from all over can come in here and use this, it's not just residents here in McSherry's.
We need to provide, if we're going to provide the service, a good service.
Is there one area, like the dog park is the most frequented and the worst offense or?
Or the handicap, the handicap.
The handicap unit at the dog.
Well, that happens being, yeah, that's, that's why we're gonna hopefully change that to get a regular one there, I think that's the, hopefully we can approve this proposed changes, maybe, yeah. That's the one I'd like to see going.
So, you need a motion? It can't, it can't hurt to try this.
Right, and see what happens.
So then, so then with this uh, with the proposed change, four units, just regular units, two times per week.
So I think what I'm gonna do is, since we've talked about it, is go back to him and ask him to update his contract and bring that to the next council meeting. And then you, is that, like we can vote on it then?
Okay, that's fine, then we hold off the next meeting, okay.
So everyone feels like the two times a week might be a good, a good thing.
And then for now.
Yeah.
And then, and that's gonna, so is that just gonna be between March and November or, or is that all year round?
That's what council needs to decide, if they think those, the porta pots should be serviced all year. If they're not gonna be serviced all year, my recommendation is that we enforce that he picks them up.
Yeah.
Well, the dog park is used year round.
Yeah, but the fields, the fields aren't used back there.
So, so, so that would be, I think that would be the ideal thing to do, remove all the porta pots except the one at the dog park, keep that year round.
Or he could lock them, give it a try.
Give it a try one more time.
They already did lock them.
And if they're cutting them off.
They're breaking them off.
At the dog park or?
I don't know.
Some, I'm not sure which one, I just.
I kinda think that would be odd that people go to Fairview and walk the way across the field with boat cutters.
That's what I'm thinking, I'm thinking if you're just walking around, who's, who's walking around with something and cut a, cut a lock off of?
Camera or brick.
Yeah, that you've got that carrying around with you.
We could try, maybe try that, would leave them there and have them lock them in Fairview.
I mean, that sounds like somebody is specifically going to do that.
Even if they're not cutting the locks off, he's, he's, they're getting damaged, people are doing stuff to damage them once, when he puts the locks on them.
See, that's why he needs to take, he needs to take them, and that's what he hasn't been doing.
He wants to hold us responsible for it, but, but if he, if he would take it away, like, like the contract.
Yeah.
Somebody said one of the vent pipes or something got damaged.
It did, on the, went down to Dog Park.
Yeah, so.
But we would leave it once at the Dog Park, uh, year round.
I, I think that would be very.
For now, for now, yeah. I don't know, I mean, what do you think? I, I don't know, I don't know how many people use it in the winter, I mean, it's, it's old in January and February.
No, they, they had people out there. There are people using it year round at Dog Park.
I, it is very popular.
Yep.
Okay, there you go.
So we're going to have them all picked up except for the dog park one.
Okay.
And they'll be serviced two times a year.
Two times a week.
Two times a year.
No wonder they're breaking them.
And then you'll come back with that contract at the next.
Yes.
Okay, so we're not even gonna bring anything up yet, okay.
We have to.
Yep, okay.
Good discussion then.
But I have to motion to table that.
Yep, sounds good, okay.
I'll make a motion to table that the next.
Oh, make a motion to table, yeah.
He seconded it, okay.
Who seconded it?
Somebody, somebody.
All right, all in favor of tabling the Be There contract updates?
Aye.
Aye. Any against?
All right, next, just the last one here, approval of expenditures, the motion to approve expenditures, expenditures from March twelfth to April eighth, if you had a chance to look through it, any questions? Might be.
I was gonna make a motion to approve the expenditures as listed.
I'll second.
Kim got it.
She got it, yeah.
All in favor of approving the expenditures, March twelfth through April eighth?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
So I need to vote, most, any other comments before we make a motion to adjourn?
I did put uh first quarter P and L is with the expenses as well, then there's every March shows up P and L.
I have a comment, if I can.
Sure.
If anybody here does Facebook, um, McSherrystown Memories, there's a page that is, it's all positive stuff.
Oh, wow.
It's very good, so check it out, it's got a lot of good stuff on it, I just did one on fishing, it was just awesome.